I'm calling the June 18th meeting of the Altadena Town Council to order. It is 7:15-ish. Tonight, we have the great honor to recognize the Central Altadena Little League Vikings. While the Central Altadena--
Yankees!
Yankees! Jesus! Can I just say one thing? My son goes to Blair, they're the Vikings. Sorry. I am so sorry. Oh, boy. That's what happens when you start your meeting late. The Central Altadena Little League Yankees. While the Central Altadena Little League was founded in 1953, the seeds of possibly bringing home the District 17 championship were planted as recently as four years ago, when a group of players and coaches came together with a challenge to take baseball seriously and work together cohesively. This current Yankees team has played together for these last four years doing just that. Under the direction of Coaches Brian Young and James Peralt, the management of Rich Conti, and with the support of their families and the Little League community, these young athletes played their way to winning the 2024 District 17 championship for the first time in 40 years. Please give them a round of applause. Before recognizing the team members individually, I would like to invite Clyde Haslett up to lead us in the pledge.
Will everyone please stand, put your hand on your heart, and repeat, or say with me, "I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." Thank you.
Thank you, Clyde. To recognize your achievement, Supervisor Barger from the 5th District sent a scroll for the team. Vice Chair Arndsen, would you read the scroll?
I also have a certificate from the Town Council--
I'll get to that.
--on record. Oh, okay. We weren't sure of the order. Supervisor Barger sent this beautiful certificate for your team. It says, "With sincere congratulations and best wishes, the Board of Supervisors of the County of Los Angeles does hereby join in your celebration, June 18th, 2024."
And the certificate from the Town Council?
Reads, "In recognition of your championship victory in the District 1757 Division, the Altadena Town Council commends you for your hard work, dedication, and good sportsmanship."
Finally, some of our local businesses also believe this historic achievement is due recognition. So, on behalf of our friend Armin with Altadena Pizza Company, Leila and Bijan with Bloomfield Creamery, and John with the future home of Lark Cake Shop #2, we want to present each of you and your coaches with a gift certificate for a free pizza, a free scoop of ice cream, and a celebratory cupcake. When I call your name, if you are here, please see Vice Chair Arndsen at the podium with Councilmember O'Malley. And at the end, just stay up here, we'll take one group picture, okay? First up, Jake Brandsby-- Julian Luna Sosa. William Rodriguez Gould. Aaron Young. And Coaches Brian Young, James Peralt, and Manager Rich Conti. Everyone come up, please. You're welcome. Okay, and you'll take these? You're so welcome. Okay. That was a very fun way to start this meeting. Okay, we are moving on to our agenda. 1.2 roll call, Pat Sutherland.
Are we missing anybody?
No, I think I--
Okay. No, no, no. Councilmembers, listen carefully for your name and respond if you'd be so kind. Connor Chipola--
Present.
Victoria Knapp--
Here.
Nick Arndsen--
Here.
Kim Yu--
Here.
Melissa Marona--
Here.
Dorothy Wong--
Here.
John Carmody--
Here.
Chris O'Malley--
Here.
Japhina Hall--
Present.
Ooh. Fiyett Stewart Gordon--
Here.
Pat Sutherland is here. Reginald Wilkins--
Right here.
Doug Cauliflower--
Here.
Diane Markison--
Here.
And Sylvia Vega--
Excused.
Excused? Okay. We have a quorum. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, approving the meeting agenda, Vice Chair Arndsen.
Good evening, fellow council and community members. There are agendas at the back of the room as well as public comment cards. The council welcomes input from the community on both agendized and non-agendized items. If you would like to make a public comment, please fill out the card and give it to a councilperson at either end of the tables. While the council does not respond to public comment during the meeting, if you would like a response, please be sure to include your contact information. Public comments are limited to two minutes. These guidelines are in place to ensure that everyone wishing to make public comment has the time to do so and that we can conduct this meeting in orderly fashion. Councilmembers, the Altadena Town Council Executive Committee met in Monday, June 10th, to set the agenda for tonight's meeting. That agenda was circulated to you on Thursday, May 17th. I have received--
Tuesday, June 17th.
Thursday, June 17th. I have received the following changes or corrections. Under #6, committee reports, please strike Item 6.4, WSGVAP report. That will be coming in July. Under #8, CT reports, please add 8.24610. Is that right? 11. That'll be Pat. Are you giving that?
Yes.
Are there any additional modifications tonight? Seeing none, I move the agenda be approved with said changes.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor of approving the agenda as amended. That looks to be unanimous. Thank you. Moving on to the officers' reports. Okay. Can I just pause for one second to say, do we know that the livestream isn't working? You do know that. Okay, no worries. Thank you. Okay. In honor of both LGBTQ+ Pride Month and tomorrow's celebration of Juneteenth, we have asked an incredible member of our community to share her thoughts with us through a beautiful poem that she wrote. Shea Shea Yancy Simmons is a lifelong resident of Altadena who has lived out and proud with dignity and respect. Opinionated and passionate, Shea Shea always speaks up with gentle kindness that's a bit rare these days. She loves her town and she loves her neighbors, as evidenced by her driving neighbors to doctors and other important appointments. She inspires me, and hopefully all of us, to be good neighbors. Shea Shea?
Good evening, everyone, and members of the Altadena Town Council. I'm here tonight as a gay, black woman, and I'm here to express my heartfelt gratitude for your unwavering support and dedication to our community, especially your support for Pride and Juneteenth celebrations. Your efforts have made Altadena a better place to live. So, Pride and Juneteenth. In June's embrace, joy takes flight. Rainbows shine with colors bright. We march with pride, our spirits high beneath a vast and open sky. Juneteenth dawns with jubilation. Freedom shout a grand elation. Chains are broken, dreams are free. We dance with joyous unity. Together we celebrate the joyous fight. Love and justice burning bright. With hearts as one, we sing and cheer for pride and freedom year by year. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Vice Chair Arndsen?
Thank you for the vice chair report. First, I want to thank Altadena Rotary for their generosity and relentless community assistance. They threw the pancake breakfast earlier this month, which raised money for multiple organizations, including the ATC, and thanks to their event. And thanks to the council members for taking on the task of selling tickets. $450 was raised for the Altadena Town Council. Rotary then added $150 to make it $600, which will be well used by our council going toward community outreach efforts. As mentioned, June is LGBTQ+ Pride Month. The council recognizes the importance of that dedication and the continued challenges to our queer and transgender community, both nationally and locally. Transgender rights in particular have been reduced nationally, and just this year already, over 500 pieces of legislation have been introduced looking to infringe on the rights of the LGBTQ+ community. That is, for the second year in a row, an historic record-breaking number. Regionally, Downey City Council have voted to permanently block the flying of the Pride flag, making it more reprehensible. The 3-2 majority vote went against the two members of that council who identified as LGBTQ+. They voted against the push for equality of two of their own. Being an out and proud member of this body, I just want to say I truly appreciate the people at this table and their acceptance and welcomeness to me and my fellow council. I'm proud to serve along with my other fellow LGBTQ+ member, John. Closer to home, San Gabriel City Council recently voted to eliminate their Human Rights Commission. It was created to safeguard rights of all residents and citizens and to ensure inclusiveness in San Gabriel. This type of discrimination continues close to home and certainly within Altadena, and I encourage us to find a way to recognize our hopefully combined desire to not allow that type of discrimination to continue in our town. As we, the Altadena Town Council, are governed by the county, I'm hoping my recent appointment to the LGBTQ+ Commission will allow me to expand on those protections within the county system. But as a gay member of our town, I know it would mean a lot to hear this local body around me read into record a statement of support. This statement would be most impactful coming from a member of the council who doesn't identify as queer or transgender. If anyone at this table has any interest in making such a statement, I would suggest it happen at our October meeting. October is National LGBTQ+ History Month. I also believe we should enshrine in our bylaws and ethical standards rules specifically against discriminatory statements to council members, including statements of a derogatory nature against people of all races, gender identification, sexual preference, religious belief, and physical ability whenever acting as a Town Council representative. While I have not personally felt anything but acceptance from this body and these council members around me, the current climate outside of this room does not lend itself for me to believe that will always be the case. I think we can also be more inclusive and open by including pronouns on our website, badges, nameplates, business cards. To that end, I have requested the Executive Committee discuss these matters at our next month's EC meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Vice Chair Arndsen. Recording Secretary, Pat Sutherland with the minutes.
Council members-- Okay. I sent the minutes of the May 21st meeting to you over the weekend. I have not received any corrections or changes. Are there any that anyone has thought of between now and then that you'd like to make? Seeing none, then I move to accept the minutes as presented.
Second.
Great. All in favor? Say aye. All right. Anybody abstaining? Reggie, are you abstaining? No, okay. Oh, Dorothy's abstaining. Okay, thank you so much. Treasurer, Chris O'Malley?
Thank you, Chair. We began the period starting on May 1st and ending on May 31st with $1,694.41 in our checking account. We had to withdraw $188.80 for GoDaddy.com, and that left us with $1,513.61 at the end. That's my report. Oh, just a quick reminder, the Town Council is a volunteer organization. We don't get tax money, we don't sell things or whatever. We depend on the kindness of our residents to fund whatever things we do. So if you would be so kind as to drop a quarter, dime, dollar, $100, whatever you want, we'd really appreciate it. If the last person could return it to Councilman Wilkins over there, thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember O'Malley. Corresponding Secretary, Dorothy Wong.
Thank you, Chair Knapp. So, welcome, everybody. Did we not have a busy May and June? Yes. So, it's wonderful being here in Altadena and seeing all the great events going on, which Nick had talked about and we'll talk about later. So, with that said, July will be a lot of the events that we'll be looking at and looking to improve again our calendar of events. So, just a couple of highlights, if they're not going to be mentioned today, is Concerts in the Park will be happening in July, starting July 6th. And also, another highlight, Concerts in the Park, what was the other one in July? There was one other awesome-- Oh, and then the Altadena Library has a ton of events going on, so check out the Altadena Library, Altadena News. And if you have anything you want to share, please send it to us, and we will share it across town. Dorothy.Wong@altedinatowncouncils.org. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Moving on to our public safety reports, Altadena Sheriff's Station, Captain Williams.
How's everybody doing? I want to introduce one of my sergeants. He'll be being in a little bit. He just had to step outside for a while. So until he gets back, we'll talk about some of the events that we have going on or coming up. Well, here he is. So let me introduce Sergeant Salazar. He's one of our most tenured, actually the most tenured sergeant we have here at the station. He does a lot. He is our operations sergeant. That means he runs the daily operations for Altadena. We wouldn't be able to get a lot of things done if he wasn't there. So I'll just have him just say a few words, and then I'll continue with my report.
Good evening. This is my first Town Council that I have attended, and I have been honored by the captain to come join you guys tonight. I wanted to introduce myself. My name's Dave Salazar, and like the captain said, I'm the operations sergeant at Altadena Station. I have 28 years on the department, roughly about five left before I retire. My day-to-day operation is to run the station. Whatever the captain needs, I'm his go-to guy. I get things done. As a matter of fact, I see every one of you guys every day when I come to work. We have a big picture in our hallway with all your photos in it.
Yep.
I've worked many assignments, custody assignments, CRDF, Twin Towers, Men's Central Jail, Long Beach Court, Compton Patrol, Metro Bureau, San Dimas Patrol, and now here in Altadena. I've been in Altadena since January 2020. I worked as a field sergeant for a couple of years, and I was blessed to get the operations spot here at the station. I just wanted to come and introduce myself. You may see me around. I also do a lot of patrol functions. I work a lot of overtime, so you may see me out in the street. If you do call the station and the captain's not in, you may be talking to me. So I just wanted to formally introduce myself, and thank you for having me tonight.
Thank you so much, and welcome. Welcome.
So, some of the quick events I just want to talk about real fast. We have our Altadena Business Watch meeting. It's going to be coming up. We did it last year around this time, and we're going to do another one with the Altadena Chamber of Commerce. That's going to be July 11th, between 12 and 1. And it's just to bring the businesses together, just to talk about some of the issues that they have, and also to listen to some of the suggestions that they may have for us to help collaborate with the businesses. It's us working together to make sure things stay in harmony. Again, I will present that flyer on the website. Again, that's July 11th, between 12 and 1. I think we're going to have snacks, too, so. And it doesn't have to be business owners. Anyone can come. On that note, we're trying to build and revamp our neighborhood watch groups. And if you see the illustration above, that's all of the neighborhood watch groups in Altadena that currently exist. There are some pockets that you can see there that are open, that probably need or should have a neighborhood watch. They really work out. So if you're interested in getting on a neighborhood watch or getting one started, please go to the website. It's altadinaalert.org. Altadena, and L-E-R-T, dot org. Thank you. On that note, we really need the help of the community to help bring some of these problematic crime issues down. I am happy to report, I know last month I talked about some of our major issues, robberies and residential burglaries. I'm happy to report that we see a downtrend, we're trending down in robberies and in residential burglaries. We haven't reached the number we want yet, but we see that we are trending down. So that's a start, you know? Our vehicle burgs, vehicle break-ins are still down. We've been on that for most of the year, all of last year, and we want to continue that, and hopefully some of the strategies and neighborhood help we've had with that can help bring our robberies and residential burglaries down even more. However, just this last month, the last couple of months, we've seen a sharp increase in grand theft autos, GTAs. It just hit us out of nowhere. And we're trying to figure out what's going on, but they are up 70% compared to last year. So, we're working with a group we call TRAP. TRAP is a task force, Task Force Regional Auto Theft Group. Let me get the right name for it. So it's Task Force for Regional Auto Theft Prevention. That's a task group, a task force of a bunch of agencies, the Sheriff's Department, LAPD, a bunch of others, working together to deal with the auto theft issues that we have. I have some flyers in the back just showing you how to protect your property and some things to look for if you're buying a used car. And also, we're going to be working with TRAP to bring the GTAs down in Altadena. Some of the things that we can think of right away are, you know, just parking in a garage. We noticed that most of the, 90% of the cars that are being stolen in Altadena are usually parked on the streets. It's funny, because we don't have a certain make and model that is being targeted. We're seeing that all vehicles, even the years, newer cars are being targeted. So we're finding that a lot of people are stealing these cars to commit other crimes, and then just quickly dumping them in a different area, sometimes bringing them back to the same area where they stole it. We need people to do their best to prevent these GTAs from happening, protect your property. TRAP gave us some clubs. I know this is old school. However, we're finding that thieves are targeting easy targets, you know? So when they come by, they see one of these clubs on, they move on to the next one. We only have a limited number right now, but once we run out, TRAP promised to give us more. So if you're interested in getting a club free, just contact the station, Deputy Bowlen. The number to the station is 626-798-1131. Ask for the Community Relations Deputy or Deputy Bowlen, and he'll make sure we can get you one of these clubs, just to put it in your car.
I know everybody was laughing. I use one. I'm not kidding.
We're seeing, they're very sophisticated. They have scanners. If you have the push-button car, they can come in, somehow get in, and then start the car. It's out of control, but we have to do what we can to bring those GTAs down and protect our property. On that note, I would like to talk about a good arrest that we made. There was a, like I said, our robberies are trending down. We were able to arrest a crew June 5th. They committed a pretty good robbery where they pointed a gun and got some guy's property and his car, actually. And the very next day, thanks to some good surveillance and detective work, we were able to arrest that crew. They were responsible for a lot of robberies in Pasadena, Monrovia, Upland, and Altadena. So hopefully that helps with bringing some of these robberies down. Also, we served a search warrant looking for weapons at another residence. TRAP is a task force, Task Force Regional Auto Theft Group, let me get the right name. So it's Task Force for Regional Auto Theft Prevention. That's a task group, a task force of a bunch of agencies, the Sheriff's Department, LAPD, a bunch of others, working together to deal with the auto theft issues that we have. I have some flyers in the back, just showing you how to protect your property and some things to look for if you're buying a used car. And also, we're going to be working with TRAP to bring the GTAs down in Altadena. Some of the things that we can think of right away are, you know, just parking in a garage, we noticed that most of the, 90% of the cars that are being stolen in Altadena are usually parked on the streets. It's funny because we don't have a certain make and model that is being targeted. We're seeing that all vehicles, even the years, newer cars are being targeted. So we're finding that a lot of people are stealing these cars to commit other crimes and then just quickly dumping them in a different area, sometimes bringing them back to the same area where they stole it. We need people to do their best to prevent these GTAs from happening, protect your property. TRAP gave us some clubs. I know this is old school. However, we're finding that thieves are targeting easy targets, you know? So when they come by, they see one of these clubs on, they move on to the next one. We only have a limited number right now, but once we run out, TRAP promised to give us more. So if you're interested in getting a club free, just contact the station, Deputy Bowian. The number to the station is 626-798-1131. Ask for the Community Relations Deputy or Deputy Bowian, and he'll make sure we can get you one of these clubs, just to put it in your car.
I know everybody was laughing, I use one. I'm not kidding.
We're seeing, they're very sophisticated, they have scanners, if you have the push-button car, they can come in somehow get in and then start the car, it's out of control, but we have to do what we can to bring those GTAs down and protect our property. On that note, I would like to talk about a good arrest that we made, there was a, like I said, our robberies are trending down. We were able to arrest a crew July, June 5th. They committed a pretty good robbery where they pointed a gun and got some guy's property and his car, actually. And the very next day, thanks to some good surveillance and detective work, we were able to arrest that crew. They're responsible for a lot of robberies in Pasadena, Monrovia, Upland, and Altadena. So hopefully that helps with bringing some of these robberies down. Also, we served a search warrant looking for weapons at another residence and came up on 650 pounds of fireworks. If you know anyone that has illegal fireworks that are selling them illegally, please let us know. We are working together with our COPS Bureau to put together an operation to target illegal fireworks. They tend to cause a problem, especially up in the trails where they like to let them off. And just, we don't need a wildfire here in Altadena. Other than that, we're getting ready for National Night Out. That's going to be August 6th, and it's going to be a fun event. I'll talk more about it next meeting. And other than that, if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Any questions? Go ahead, Councilmember Chipola.
So Captain, the GTAs, the cars you said are just, they're being stolen, they're being dropped off, are these joyrides, are they stripping them? What's the...
Well, we think they're being, most of them are being joyride and they're using them for different crimes. Use them for burglaries and then drop them off.
Go ahead, Councilmember Carmody.
Thank you. Are you noticing like a certain trend in area in Altadena that they're targeting or is it sort of like random?
It was random spread, spread all over, you know? At first, it was concentrated on the east side of Altadena, however, the last month we saw it was spread all out. And we can't give a specific time either, it's usually between 11:00 at night and 8:00 in the morning. It's usually when they park their car, they wake up the next morning, they come and see their vehicle gone, and that's when they can report it. And that's the reporting time we have to give, so.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you for that informative information, and if you want a club for your vehicle, I know that we chuckled, but I have seen them on cars and I wondered why, and now I know. Go to the, please contact the sheriff station.
Thank you.
California Highway Patrol, I think I saw Officer Keller.
Good evening, councilmembers and members of the community. I'm Officer Keller with the California Highway Patrol, the Altadena Station here, and I will be giving you the traffic report for the month of May. We had a total of 20 traffic collisions investigated by the California Highway Patrol. This included two hit-and-run collisions, one suspected DUI collision. Total of nine parties out of these crashes had injuries. No pedestrian collisions, but there was one bicyclist involved in a collision. There was a spike in vehicles versus parked vehicles this, in the month of May, so just be careful where you're parking, try to stay away from those curves, and park as close to the curb as possible. Now that school is out of session, we want to remind you to please stay vigilant. A lot of people are going to be traveling on the highways and on the streets. We just finished our, in April, distracted driving month. May was Passenger Safety Restraint Seatbelt Clicker Ticket Month. I haven't got the final numbers for that, but hopefully next month I'll be able to give you some statistics on the number of citations that were issued, which was very high compared to last couple of months. Even the new cars, with all the bells and whistles, we're forgetting the easiest safety And that is all I have. Last thing I want to make note of, car seats. My office does car seat installs and education every Wednesday by appointment. If you or anyone you know has the need to get educated or wants their child's seat looked at, please feel free to contact my office and schedule an appointment, and again, those are on Wednesdays. Even if it's a different day, we can, we can work with you and make it happen.
Any questions? Go ahead.
I just want to make a comment. I actually went on Wednesday and got my car seat installed, and it was a week before my son was born, so thank you guys for doing that.
You are very, you're not the only one.
It wasn't planned that way, I thought it was going to be like three weeks in advance, but thank you for...
We get the day before and the day after quite often.
I appreciate it, and so does my son, thank you.
Anytime.
Councilmember Wong.
You might not know this right, first of all, thank you again for all your great work protecting the children as we did eight Bike to School Day events in May, so thank you very much for your help with that. So the bicycle collision that occurred, you might not know where it happened-ish.
Ish is...
Yes, it was on Woodbury and El Sereno.
Yeah.
Woodbury and El Sereno.
Yes.
Okay.
I don't know the details on it, just the location.
Thank you.
It was a minor injury.
Thank you.
I did want to say that I noticed the speed trailer on Altadena Drive near Olive, and so we appreciate seeing that deployed in the community again. And I think that most of the concerns I've heard, and Public Works can attest to this, is that we are really trying to address excessive speed, even with our efforts to install speed cushions and stop signs and signals. It forces those who are intent on driving fast onto other streets that don't have those. So as always, we appreciate your presence in the community, we would love to see you, I love to see Officer Bay out there, I always stop and thank him for his service. But I think that there's, there's just been a general feeling that speed has taken over and impatience as well, so I'll look for you.
Yes, we'll be out there, once things kind of start settling down at the office, we've been very busy. And on the speed trailer note, we are incorporating our senior volunteers to assist with the movement to help us deploy them in different locations, and we just picked up a brand spanking new one last Monday, so it'll be out on the streets shortly.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you so much and thanks for your service.
Thank you.
Okay, we have from LA County Fire Chief Denerson. Or we don't have Chief Denerson. Okay, not seeing him, that's okay. Maria Greiken is on vacation. So say it again.
I just wanted to mention that Maria's on vacation, but we have some no fireworks signs that are going to be picked up from the fire stations here in Altadena. So if you want a sign in your neighborhood, let your council members know. Thank you very much.
And councilmembers, that's just a note to you, we usually, there's usually enough for two per census tract, so they're usually at, you can go to Station 11, and then you can place them or have them placed wherever you think they're the most visible. We're leading, we're in the lead-up to fireworks season, so now would be a good time to do
Also in the Meadows Census Tract, Meadows, we're looking into goats, so if anybody has, we were going to do some research on brush clearance and goats, throwing that out there.
Thank you for that. There is a program for that, just FYI. They do brush clearance, that's what the goats do. Okay, we are moving on to our community reports. I saw Guillermo here, Parks and Recreation.
Hey, everybody. I'm going to go over a couple of programs we've got going on at Loma Alta and at Farnsworth. Definitely got a lot of events every Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, so that's going to be fun. That's going to be my big bulk of it, is Parks After Dark, I'll give you guys kind of the rundown of what our schedule's going to look like. So every Thursday, Friday, and Saturday from 6:00 PM to 10:00 PM, starting last week all the way up until August 3rd, we're going to be having our special events. So Thursdays is more sports day, so if anybody just wants to go out and just participate in a clinic, whether it be for soccer, whether it be for basketball, volleyball, we have it out there, it's all free of charge, so we welcome everybody. In addition to that, we do have recreation classes that are going to be free. So for the first hour and a half, it's either a dance class, a guitar class, or a cooking class. So it's free of charge, everybody's welcome. In addition to the new programming...
Did you say cookie or cooking?
Cooking.
Cookie?
Cooking.
Cooking, okay. You can tell where my mind is on the cookie, but cooking class, got it.
No, yeah, and then also in addition to that, we are going to be doing our Senior Social Hour, so it's a new program we're bringing in with Parks After Dark, we're dedicating a minimum of an hour and a half for senior programming. Mr. Marshall, who actually hosts the Urban Ballroom Dance Class, actually is going to be managing it, so we're going to be doing bingo with them, we're going to be doing arts and crafts, they're going to be doing chair fitness, and then in addition to their dance program. And then also, we're working on doing a senior luau, so we're expecting to do that towards the end of July. So we'll make sure to send out a flyer for everybody. Another thing we got going on is also our movies and concerts. So this Friday night, it's going to be a movie night, we're going to be showing the new TMNT movie, Teenage Mutant Ninja Turtles, and then Saturday, we're going to be having a DJ, it's DJ Black House, he's going to be coming out from 6:00 to 10:00 PM. But following that, every Friday, it's actually concert night, and then Saturdays are going to be our movie nights. It's just for this month, just because we don't want to coincide with the Altadena's, I mean Rotary Club's concert series. So they're actually going to be bringing that up, it starts July 6th and actually goes all the way up until September 7th. So yeah, so that's actually going to be taking place at Farnsworth, and those concerts actually start at 7:00 PM over there. I could go off, I have the slides here, I'll just go off of that. So like I mentioned with the concerts for Parks After Dark, and then sports programming, like I mentioned, we got basketball clinics, soccer clinics, and volleyball clinics. The basketball clinics and the volleyball clinics and all that, I have actually some flyers back there, so if you want to get the times, you're more than welcome to. We do have registration, but it's all online, so just visit us at reservations.lacounty.gov. And then some new recreation classes we got going on, first to third baseball, they're actually doing a summer camp at Loma Alta Park, so that's going to be taking place from June 10th all the way to July 26th. So that's for ages four to 14. And then also some of our recreation classes that we got going on is at Farnsworth Park, which we have our Jazzy Ballet, Pre-Ballet, Salsa Cardio, and then we also have Alta Jam. And then just wanted to bring up a little bit with our farmer's market for any of those that are interested, from 4:00 PM to 7:00 PM, we actually have that, and they got pretty good food, they got kombucha, hummus, Mediterranean food, they got barbecue, my favorite, they got dumplings. They have a couple of food trucks that change, we actually contracted one of them last Saturday, if any of you guys came out, the Valenswinkle Hot Dog, so they're really good, they got lemonade, so just come out and support. And then also, I know that some of you guys have been waiting for this, is actually the swimming pool hours, so I put some flyers back there in case anybody's interested, they have free swim, they have sports, and then they have a couple of other activities going on, so it has all the open hours. And then last but not least, Farnsworth Park is going to be hosting National Night Out, and that's going to take place August 6th from 5:00 PM to 7:00 PM, same thing, got flyers back there. And then last but not least, I put all the contact information for myself, and then the two supervisors who oversee the specific park, either at Charles Farnsworth Park or Loma Alta Park. All right. Any questions?
Any questions? I have a question. I think you may have been on the email that I sent to Sam as it relates to the banner that the Little League team just won.
Yes, I spoke with them, it's going to be a yes, they're definitely going to post it up. He just said just two things, just to make sure you guys renew the, well, Central Altadena Little League just has to renew their annual contract, and then he'll make sure, he will post it up, obviously because you guys just won it, and then regularly too during the season for baseball.
Great, that's so awesome, they're going to be so excited to hear that.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions? Go ahead.
Quick question, you said movie nights are at Farnsworth Park or?
Loma Alta Park. So the Parks After Dark activities that take place Thursday, Fridays, and Saturdays are 6:00 PM to 10:00 PM at Loma Alta Park.
Okay, anything else? All right, great, it's going to be a great summer at our parks. Thank you so much Guillermo, it's good to see you.
You're fine.
Okay, moving on to ACAB, Pat Sutherland.
Yes, this can be fairly brief for ACAB, which I'm sure all of you remember is Altadena Community Center Advisory Board, which means this building. There are a number of things that we've been trying to get done for the last few months, three of them actually got finished this, this year recently. The, there's, there was work done on the exterior lighting of the building, I have not been here at night before, so I'll be interested to see how good it looks when we go outside, but it needed some help. The parking lot has been restriped, which I loved when I came in, I could finally find my parking place, so it's nice to have it restriped. And those lovely curtains over there are actually brand new, the ones that were here were, shall we say...
Past their usefulness.
Yeah. And they didn't work and they were hard to manage, these are very, very nice and they actually do work and do what we need to have done. That is all I have to say for now. More to come.
Pat, will you just make note that we have got to get the projector situation squared away?
Yeah.
We talked about it, but now, based on just what happened tonight, we've got to...
It's moved up the list now, I think, even more.
Great.
Yeah.
Okay, Altadena Historical, Altadena Historical Society, is Narmine here?
Oh, there you are.
Come on up.
You got it. Good evening, councilmembers, and good evening, the community. Well, there's something very exciting happening tomorrow. Thank you for reminding me. Tomorrow is our Juneteenth celebration at Farnsworth Park, and it's going to be from noon to 1:30 in the afternoon, and lunch will be served, so, and we are also going to be giving scholarships to two high school students in memory of or in honor of Ellen Garrison, who was a teacher and activist in her life, and a movie has been made of her, and it is titled "Ellen Garrison: Scenes From An Activist's Life." And as I mentioned, we will be giving two scholarship awards to two high school students. By the way, I'm reading my notes off of these pieces of paper because I went to print out my notes and my printer didn't work. Then I decided, well, I'll just put it on a flash drive and bring it here, and that didn't work either. So when I came in here and things are not working here, I thought, it's just that kind of day. So anyway, folks, I hope that you can join us at Farnsworth Park tomorrow from 12:00 to 1:30. The lunch should be really lovely, I think the movie is going to be reflective and informative about Ellen Garrison's life. And she was quite the lady, and we have, the Altadena Historical Society has developed scholarships to give to high school students for their college education. And then, then of course, on June 22nd, from 12:00 to 2:00 PM, we're going to celebrate the opening as well as the ribbon cutting of Webster's, Webster's Pharmacy, right, that has been here for eons. And so they're going to open in their new location, and I hope that you will join them. And by the way, the address is 2333 Lake Avenue. And then on Wednesday, June 26th, from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM, is an event which is called the 48th State Tour Event, and it is hosted by the, by Mountain View Mortuary and Cemetery, where they're going to have a workshop all day long, and what they are working on are free gravestone preservation. And so the workshop will be held by Jonathan Appel, I hope I'm pronouncing his last name correctly. Lunch will be included, if nothing else, you could have a nice lunch as well as... Lunch will be included, if nothing else, you could have a nice lunch, as well as learn something about gravestone preservation. And I think there's more coming up for us, and I will report that at our next meeting. And I wish you a good evening.
Thank you so much, thanks for being here.
Of course, my pleasure.
Okay, the next report is our Owen Brown Committee, and before I turn it over, I just wanted to make a couple of comments about that. First, I wanted to thank outgoing appointee for the town council to that committee, Diane Markison, who served on that committee from its beginning, and we appreciate all of her insight and her dedication, and the time commitment for the years that that committee has been in process. As she leaves, we now are going to appoint a new member of the town council to the committee, and that would be Councilmember O'Malley, and as he attended the most recent meeting, he has a report for us.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Owen Brown Committee is happy to report that the gravesite land purchased for the community by Cantwell Anderson and held for us for the past three years has now been successfully transferred to the Santa Monica Mountains Conservatory to be protected in perpetuity from development. The committee looked into several possible conservatories and determined that SMCC, sorry, SMMC was the best option, as it is the largest and also holds the contiguous land around La Vinia. Other good news is that the gravesite land will go through the final step of being designated an LA County Landmark by the Landmark Commission at a public hearing on July 28th. Members of the public are welcome to attend. Third piece of news is I'm on the committee. The committee would like to thank Diane Markison, who has served on this in the previous committee with the town council, working towards preserving Owen Brown's gravesite from development, and for its open space and historical value. It has been a years-long effort, and, I mean, it's Diane, we all appreciate her effort.
Thank you, thank you for agreeing to serve, Councilmember O'Malley. Okay, we're moving on to our special presentations, we have two tonight, and the first one up is Public Works with some project updates, and I'll bring up Julian Garcia, Principal Engineer.
Good evening, Town Council and...
Good evening, Town Council and members of the community, and my name is Julian Garcia, and I'm a Principal Engineer with LA County Public Works, and I'll be here to provide some updates, in particular mostly on our efforts to do some traffic, pedestrian and traffic safety improvements on New York Drive and Altadena Drive, as well as provide some updates on several other traffic safety projects going on in the community. So, yeah, objectives, we'll receive some input as well, go on to... So this is New York Drive and Altadena Drive. Sometime last year, members of the community, as well as the town council, asked Public Works to go and evaluate this intersection for potential safety improvements, so our team went out there to collect some traffic data, pedestrian data, as well as some existing conditions, to determine what recommendations could be made to address some of the challenges seen at this intersection. What our team noticed out there, one of the main things is the crosswalks would need some updates, to high-visibility crosswalks. Also, we noticed that the turning radius on the corners is rather wide, which leads to faster turns, so maybe narrowing it in and tightening it a little bit. We also noticed that it could be wider landing areas in the corners for the intersections, and in looking at traffic flows as well, one of the things we noticed too is on the westbound direction, there are two through lanes going along New York Drive and crossing that intersection, the right lane turns immediately into a right-turn-only lane, which becomes a trap lane if you're trying to go straight, so that creates some confusing and conflicting movement as cars are trying to get across. So another thing too was based on the volumes, to, the traffic volumes going north-south, to put in a left-turn arrow on that direction as well. We also noticed that signal equipment could be updated, and it would need to be updated to be able to put that left arrow, and the space at the corners would not be sufficient to accommodate the new equipment, so this would need an entire intersection traffic signal upgrade, which can take a few years in design, so design, procurement of materials and construction, so we wanted to come up with some improvements that we could put in now, in advance of that full-traffic upgrade project to come in the future. So we can go to the next slide to see what the recommendations there was, to remove one westbound through lane, as discussed, prior to the intersection, so that there will be no conflicting movement after you cross the intersection, so it'd be one lane going through, and then you can move to the right if you wish to make that right turn. Installation of Continental Crosswalks in all the areas that have the existing current crosswalks, installation of curb extensions, the traffic signal equipment upgrade, and the addition of the protective permissive, which is just a fancy way of saying a left-turn arrow, mostly for the south one, but providing it in both directions, north and south. So, and for the interim conditions, if we can go to the next slide there, as I mentioned, the full intersection improvement would require a lot of capital improvements that will take a while to put in, but usually it's a couple of years of design acquisition and installations, so we wanted to put in, recommend putting in some temporary improvements through striping delineators to achieve those conditions now, while the full-on infrastructure project can be scheduled, programmed, and installed. So this shows right there, like the little red around the corner is going to be striped and delineators to kind of choke the intersection down a little bit, provide shorter crossing distances, enhancing the existing crosswalks to the Continental Crosswalks. You'll notice that this temporary, or this interim proposal does not have a crosswalk on the right side and the eastbound, sorry, on the east side of the intersection going north-south. That is for the interim conditions, because the current signal doesn't have PED signals for that segment. We will, once we come in with a signal upgrade, we would include those PED signals and add that crosswalk in there. We just couldn't put it in right now without the proper pedestrian signaling improvements in there. So that's why you will see that current configuration that is being proposed does not have the crosswalk, but that would be added in the ultimate configuration with a signal upgrade. Additionally, notice we removed one of the lanes on the westbound direction, turning it into the right-turn lane, and that striping kind of eliminates where the existing right-turn lane is, that it can be blocked off with striping and delineators, and make a narrower turn, as well as adding track marks to make sure that everybody in the right lane knows that that is a right-turn-only lane to follow forward with. So that is the configuration as we're proposing right now, to move forward with. This is all going to be paint and delineators and striping, to be followed, as I mentioned, with the full improvement projects. It may not look exactly the same when the full improvement projects go in, you'll notice in the top-left there on the northwest intersection is a very large segment cut off. The entire concrete ballpark may not be that big, but the striping will remain like that even after the concrete improvements go in. There are some challenges with drainage, and making sure that we don't have ponding in those situations if we had to block that off with concrete, but that will be where the striping will remain. So, so where does that put us out? So right now, the next steps for this interim proposal would be to finalize the scope of the quick build, which is what we're calling the improvements right now. That would be, I put there a date of June 2024, because barring somebody really being fully against it, we're pretty much done with that, so that would be completed this month, finalize it into a scope. Then we'll prepare the design plans for the quick build improvements, we would have that completed in September. We do have to, even though we laid it out there conceptually, we do have to make sure that there's two, there's driveways immediately next to the intersection that they have proper space and visibility to come in and out, so that will take some fieldwork to finish. And then we would coordinate implementation of those improvements by December, so that the project would be in, the striping and delineators before the end of the year. And then we'll develop the full scope for the full traffic signal upgrade, I didn't put a timeline for that, because that would require us getting the estimates, getting the funding and programming in there, but our main goal right now is to get the interim improvements as quickly as possible, to get those traffic patterns changed as quickly as we can. I also wanted to provide some updates on other Altadena active traffic safety projects, and first off, this only includes what we consider traffic safety projects, which is under our traffic safety program, so these are projects that are usually generated through constituent requests to look at adding stop signs or addressing speeding. This does not include capital improvement projects, such as what's going on in Washington Altadena, or pavement preservation-type projects, or development-led projects, these are more like spot treatments that we have. The red hexagons, kind of look like red circles there, are, we're looking at stop signs to implement new stop signs. The blue circles are intersection striping reconfigurations, such as the one that we're doing in New York and Altadena. You'll see there's some segments that are, look like they have outlines around them, those are edge line striping or other striping upgrades to the corridors, and there are some green thicker lines, which is where we are implementing speed cushions. If you see the dashlines in there, they're not that easily legible, but I will share this file with the town council, so they'll have access to that as well. Those dashlines are the completed projects, where we recently have either implemented stop signs or intersection configurations, or speed cushions and such. So to quickly go over some of those projects that we put out there with the quick updates on where we are in those, Windsor Avenue at Figueroa Drive, there's an intersection upgrade, there's a signal going in right now, work is almost completed, I believe that it will be energized within the next week or two. Windsor Avenue on Ventura Street, that is the entrance to JPL, that intersection is shared with the City of Pasadena, we're working on piloting a kind of project there, well, right now it has kind of weird access, where you're entering from two different points and kind of coming together, so we're probably going to block off one of them for a couple of weeks and look at traffic patterns there and see if we can eliminate it completely, so that there is one entry point, reducing some conflicts at that intersection. Fair Oaks at Loma Alta and Fair Oaks at Altadena, are those are the two remaining major improvements from last year's directives. Those are pretty complicated intersections, particularly Fair Oaks at Loma Alta, where I think on our fourth design iteration, the first three in the end did not quite work, but I think we're pretty good in those. We hope to be coming back to the town council with a presentation on those in the next month or so. Fair Oaks at Altadena, we have a layout, that's almost the same as New York, where we have the interim solutions for now, with a full signal upgrade to follow. Ventura Street and Casitas Avenue, as well as Altadena Drive and Mendocino Lane, those are minor improvements with a striping, edge line striping wrapping around the corners to kind of reduce those turning radius, and because a lot of these areas don't have sidewalks to at least provide some areas where cars aren't supposed to be in, to at least visually direct cars to leave areas for pedestrians and such. All of those will also include crosswalk upgrades to high-visibility crosswalks. With the striping upgrades, those are usually edge line striping along corridors, we have Cheney Trail and Hill Avenue that are currently being laid out, and we have Lincoln Avenue from Altadena Drive to, all the way to the La Vinia Development, that's also being tied to the Loma Alta from Lincoln Avenue to Dabney Street, so those two are combined into one rather large striping project, also trying to add some driver feedback signs to, some permanent ones, like to make sure that we can monitor and try to keep speeding down, updating the intersection at Loma Alta and Lincoln as well with better crosswalks, and that takes us to the multi-way stop control as well, we're adding a stop sign, a four-way stop sign at Loma Alta and Sunset Ridge, that's been approved, it was approved a little while ago, we're, come across some challenges with drainage there to be able to put handicap access, ADA compliant access, that's what's kind of delayed that, but we're moving forward with that as well. We have two other multi-way stop controls on Lake Avenue, one at Mount Curve and one at Conchas Street that are being proposed as well, that is the north and south end of Farnsworth Park. There is existing uncontrolled crosswalks at that location, so we're looking to add stop controls at those two crosswalks. Right now, we're laying out what those upgraded crosswalks would look like. There are very few standard intersections in Altadena, so every time we put in a crosswalk or one upgraded, it takes some very specific design, so we also hope to come back to the town council with some concepts for that before that moves forward. And the two newest ones we added to the list that recently got approved are Ventura Street and Tall Avenue, as well as Casitas Avenue and Crosby Street, to pursue in stop signs as well. And finally, there are the speed cushions, our Vista Avenue between Mendocino Street and New York Drive, the project's been approved and is now just being scheduled with our road maintenance crews to go and implement, as well as Mountain View Street, it's two separate projects, but it's one continuous segment from Casitas Avenue to Lincoln Avenue, and then from Lincoln Avenue to Fair Oaks. So again, those two have been approved and secured, just currently being scheduled out with the road maintenance crews for implementation, so that's my update on traffic safety projects.
First, thank you so much, we have a lot going on, and piggybacking on our conversation earlier with the sheriff and the CHP, working to mitigate speed on a lot of our service streets and residential areas. My specific question is related to Altadena Drive in New York. When the westbound New York Drive is taken to one lane before, where am I, Altadena? How far back, and is it going to, you mentioned about, I know there's a right-turn lane there now, already, so how far back are we going to?
It'll just go one block, and then it's just transitioning down into, it'll just be a transition about one block, and then it'll just transition out, it's, if you go farther out, it's one lane, it just kind of widens out to two, so we'll just be taking one of those out.
Okay, so not, not technically a block, because there is no block, because the block goes all the way to...
Right.
Okay, so however many feet that is.
Yeah, there is a certain transition distance that we have to follow to be able to eliminate a lane, so we'll just be doing that. We'll maintain the, there's a driveway just to the east of the intersection, so the transition will begin past that driveway, so we don't want to have the transition occurring where a vehicle's coming out, we want to have that fully, that elimination fully executed before that driveway.
Okay, and then are we still looking at the intersection of Los Robles at Woodbury? And, or no, at Santa, I'm sorry, let's back up. Woodbury and Santa Rosa and the Los Robles merge, and trying to merge those lanes east of, or west of Los Robles on Woodbury?
We are, and we're in discussions with City of Pasadena, that is a shared jurisdiction, so that, that is double the red tape, but we are working on having them look at their traffic conditions, as well as us looking at ours, to come up with the appropriate location for that.
Okay, so it's still on the radar, that's all I...
Yeah, and then, one thing to emphasize too, is in that list of projects, I only included projects that are active, there's a number of things we call like traffic studies or traffic investigations, where requests come in, if there's an active investigation or study going on, I did not include it in there, that only includes locations for which investigation was completed and action was recommended. So there will be a number of requests that are still, that is being collected, or that they're still being analyzed, that were not included in that list, because we don't have a recommended course of action yet.
Any other questions? Go ahead, Councilmember Marona.
Thank you. On Windsor and Figueroa, I believe, where the light is going in, I've had a lot of questions as to, will that be motion detected, so that the traffic will continue north-south, and only when somebody comes to Windsor to turn? Or is it going to be like a standard traffic signal?
It's going to be a mix, it could be mostly set for green along the northbound direction in Windsor with turning red, but it will also not, if there isn't any cross-traffic for a long period of time, it'll trigger eventually, just to make sure that you're not just expecting a green always, so...
Other questions? Councilmember Wong?
Thank you, Chair Jones. So obviously, there's a lot of great work and attention being paid to traffic safety in our community, so we really appreciate everyone's work here. I was also looking, two quick questions, so again, dangerous by design report came out that 75% increase in pedestrian deaths have happened nationwide, and Altadena seems to also trend, is not immune, because we don't have a lot of connective sidewalks, et cetera, or pathways. So Vision Zero, you don't have to go into detail, but Vision Zero Action Plan is definitely one of the tools that can also help us, and also quick builds, or as you've been talking about, so related to Loma Alta, road reconditioning at one point in time was also going to be part of that. So can you just, just quickly explain that all of these actions, even daylighting is now a California law, and metro, active transportation actually has identified Lincoln Avenue and Woodbury in corridor, transportation corridors for Measure M funding? Woodbury in corridor, transportation corridors for Measure M funding. So how can Altadena, without getting too overwhelmed with things, still help you guys? And how do we help each other at the end of the day?
Well, I think the continued partnership is really, as you can see, there are a lot of things going on in Altadena. And I think when we try to approach each of them independently, everything gets delayed a little bit. So the approach of working with the town council community, prioritizing certain locations, certain corridors to be able to say, well, if we do this one first and this one will be next, or do you like to have it swapped? And being able to make sure that we are prioritizing our work in the same manner that the community is prioritizing those improvements. I think that's one of the best ways to make sure that this all moves forward. In those discussions that we have had with the community and with the town council, we've been able to identify existing projects and then adding to them, saying, well, if we're going to go out there and do something, then might as well extend it around the corner and address that as well. Again, the list of projects here specifically reflects requests that we received to look at specific locations, but everything that we do in addressing that, whenever we learn something new, we add that to the standards of a project. So if a new project's going to go out there, then we can start applying some of the same things that we've come across in trying to address specific situations.
Thank you.
Councilmember Chipola?
So Juliana, so the New York Drive, Altadena, you're eliminating one lane entirely. So the right turn lane is being eliminated entirely. The lane that is now.
So that, what's existing, what has a right lane is going to be striped off. No vehicles will go in there, but the next lane, which is currently a through lane, is now becoming a right lane.
Right, so what was a through lane is going to be now a right lane. So you're eliminating the right hand lane that's there now, right?
Space wise, yes, yeah. Traffic flow, we're still keeping a right turn lane, but the space that was currently occupied by the right.
But we're going down to one through lane?
Yes. There's only one through receiving lane in the other side of the intersection.
And so what did the traffic study indicate the effect on backup would be?
So we looked at the queuing. There's now a whole lot of intersection. There will be some queuing in there, but that is also an active signal that we can update and change the timing to address depending on what time it is. We're more concerned usually with these when we put the stop signs, that's when the queuing really becomes an issue. With a traffic signal, especially when we're going to be upgrading the traffic signal, we have more ability to address that dynamically. If there are specific times of day when we're getting that queuing, we can get that green longer at those periods of time.
I think that addresses my concern, yeah. Thanks.
Okay, is that it for questions? Okay, thank you so much. It's good to see you and to get such a thorough.
I'll probably see you next month, too.
Yes, thank you. Okay, we are moving on to our next Public Works presentation. It's an update on our contract with UWS. Khaled.
Okay, good evening, everyone. Thank you for having us here. They gave me the opportunity to present our updates tonight. My name is Khaled Alkam. I'm a principal civil engineer with LA County Public Works Environmental Programs Division. I oversee all the contracts for trash collection services in the unincorporated communities of LA County. I think you all know Chris Shepherd, who used to oversee these contracts. I'll be taking over from Chris. Chris is still with us, but he's doing other things regarding more of like the policy and programs. So with me here too is Elizabeth Zaragoza. She oversees the day-to-day stuff or the day-to-day activities for this contract for Altadena with UWS. So if you call Public Works, most likely you're going to be talking to Elizabeth. So I'm here tonight to provide you with an update regarding the basic monthly rate for the trash collection. So rate adjustments are allowed annually per our contract with UWS and they occur every July 1st of each year. Public Works reviews and approves these annual rate adjustments to ensure that they are calculated pursuant to the contract documents. So every year the contractor comes with the proposed rate increase, they submit it to us, we review it, we make sure it complies with the contract documents, and we approve it before it goes into effect. All our trash contracts, trash collection contracts have rate adjustments and they happen about the same time of the year. The current rate that everyone in this community pays is currently $34.31 for the basic service. This rate is scheduled to increase to $36.03 effective July 1st. That's an increase of $1.72, which is a 5% increase. And the way we calculate it is we use the Consumer Price Index for Trash Collection, which is published by the US Department of Labor. Last year it was 7%. So even though the CPI last year was 7%, the rate increase is 5%, which is the maximum that's allowed in this contract. Can you go back one slide? Thank you. Okay, just to give you a perspective of the new rate in comparison with rates in the neighboring cities, on the screen you could, you see the rates for the basic service for cities around Altadena and Canelo Mesa. As you could see, Glendale, the rate is $32.34, but effective July 1st, they're getting a 45% increase to $46. I think maybe they're implementing the state bill 1383 for organics and maybe that explains the increase. Arcadia is getting another 5% increase to almost $37 July 1st. Monrovia, $42. LA, $36. Sierra Madre, $51. San Marino, $51. And as you can see on the screen too, the rate effective July 1st is going to be $36. So what's included in the $36 that you pay every month on your bill? So you get one spare week collection for trash recyclables and organic waste. You get, if you request, E-Pare resistant carts, which are available in all the colors, the black, the blue, and the, excuse me, the green. So as of last week, I think we had 650 signups for the pair cart, which has probably increased almost by 30 signups since last month. So if you know anyone who's looking for a, you know, E-Pare resistant cart, please talk to us after the meeting. We'll let you know how you could sign up for one. Also included in the service is the rollout service for qualified residents. Bulky item collections of up to four pickups per year up on request. We do combined composite mold giveaways and paper shredding events per year. These events usually happens in the spring and the fall. We do annual cleanup events. We have sharp containers available up on request. We do the Christmas tree collection, containers and tools for community cleanups events scheduled by community members. And we do the illegal dumping collection from the public road right away. I would also want to give you a brief update on the UWS's customer service and performance. So we keep track of the complaints that received by Public Works and by UWS, you trash hauler. And on average, we receive about 17 complaints per month. These complaints include combination of billing complaints, service issues, collection issues. So I'd like to thank everyone who sent us their complaints because this helped us identify areas where we could actually improve. So thank you, and we encourage you to submit more complaints. If there's any issues, please let us know, let UWS know, because this is the only way we could work with the hauler to resolve those issues. And please, I mean, just let's not report on anything that happened like a year ago. Let's try to submit something recent so we could, actionable items, so we could work on and give those issues resolved. Because a lot of the complaints that we actually get is for things that happened during the transition. Yes, we had a rocky start, we understand, we had a rocky start with the transition. We had issues, but we've been working with the UWS for the last few weeks. We had, you know, some of you attended some meetings with us and we've been working with the UWS, and UWS committed to do some improvement, and we like to hold them accountable to that. But we need your feedback, see if there's actually making improvements or not. We are, like I said, we are committed to addressing all the issues and concerns that come up. On the slide here, you know, to report any issues with the trash service, please contact the 888 Clean LA phone number, or you could send us an email to trash@pw.lacounty.gov. Also on the screen you have UWS's phone number and email address. You know, the fastest way to get a resolution is to contact the hauler directly, but if they're not responsive or if they don't answer the calls or the wait time is too long, please call us, we'll help you get your issues addressed. I also will provide you with my contact information after the meeting if you want. I'll give you my business card. I still ask you to send the email to trashpw so we could keep track of the complaints, but you could copy me on those emails too, and I'll make sure that they get taken care of. I think if, I'll open it for questions if there are any questions.
I'm sure we have some questions. I see them coming in right now. Before we get to the questions, I just want to let you know that to make us all feel a little better, there are some cookies in the back of the room that he brought as a peace offering. Okay, Councilmember Stuart Gordon?
Yes, hi. I have a question. Can you explain to me when it comes to the rollout service, what is considered a qualified resident?
Qualified residents are senior or disabled. Do you know what age, Elizabeth?
For the qualified, senior discount, I believe it should be like 65 and older or I think it's four if the physical disability.
No, they, the rollout service.
The rollout.
Come up to the mic. There she comes. Let's get it so that we're on the record and everyone can hear. So the question was what quali, how do you qualify for rollout service? And now we're going to address it.
For the rollout service, it's usually for senior citizens that are for 65 and older. It's considered free for services for them, or if they have a disability that they could prove that they're unable to physically take out their carts onto the appropriate location for the carts to be taken out. So if they have, for example, if they're wheelchair bound or if they have chronic pain, if they can prove that they're unable to physically, then they'll be able to get the rollout service. Otherwise, it's still an additional fee if you just desire it.
And I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, there has to be nobody else in the house.
Microphone, microphone.
To help, right?
I believe so.
Yeah, just want to make sure that to, as long as there's nobody else in the household who actually, you know, could, you know, move the carts outside.
Like a teenager, or something. And that's to qualify for the free service, although it's a paid service if you request it?
Correct.
Okay, Councilmember Chipola?
Thank you.
Yeah, just, I mean, this is feedback that UWS has received before. I've called it in. There is still, and it still persists, a general sloppiness with the way carts are handled, the way carts are, the way the cans are put back, they're scattered all over the street, they're knocked over. I mean, they do just as good a job as bears at making a mess after they're done, so.
I agree with you, and we noticed, I, you know, I drove the Altadena streets and I've seen how the trash trucks handle your carts. For this reason, we talked to UWS and they committed to have a supervisor do a ride on along with the drivers to give the proper training and coaching on how to handle the carts and provide an excellent, you know, customer experience at the curb. So we're trying to hold them accountable to that. They asked for, you know, a few weeks to implement this, and, you know, that's why we're asking the public to keep us updated.
I understand. So, but, I mean, I remember Councilmember O'Malley brought up similar concerns. The same excuse was put on workers. I have serious doubts that, having talked to, the workers are primarily responsible. There's something more systemic, the schedule that they're being driven on, I don't know what it is. I mean, is there any deeper look into why workers are under the circumstances that cause them to be careless?
Not really. I mean, we look into it with them. It could be just, you know, again, it's new contract, new employees maybe, they have there, but they need to do proper training, which UWS is committed to do, to provide for their employees.
I do want to say, Councilmember Chipola, that the president of UWS, their trucks are equipped with cameras, and so where they've received specific complaints and we have the coordinates of the issue, whether it was the trash can was left in the middle of the street, or the contents of the trash can were strewn all over the street, or the truck leaked hydraulic fluid. He's going back personally and reviewing the tapes, or I guess we call it tapes, the video, the recording, to see actually what's happening. And I did want to make a comment about that, having been on the last two meetings that were held. One of the issues that was brought up was that on our, particularly on narrow streets where there aren't sidewalks, or even if there are sidewalks but the street itself is narrow, if the bin is left not at the curb or not into whatever easement is there, that it creates a traffic hazard. And after trash pickup on Altadena Drive, west of Allen, for the very first time ever living here, the cans had been picked up and put on to the sidewalk from the street. And that had been a problem before because it's narrow there and then it gets wider as you go further west. So I, although I know that the issues are far and wide, I can tell from that last meeting that we had that someone addressed that particular issue on that particular street with the drivers there, and it was nice to see that those cans were not in the middle of the street.
Thank you for that, Victoria. And to just to add, you know, regarding the footage, when you, when you send us an email and you give us a call, that's why we need details exactly where it happened, when it happened, because we could go and review the footage with UWS and we could hold them accountable. But if we just told me like, you know, you missed the neighbor's, you know, pickup, we don't know where that happened or when it happened. So that's why we need, the more details you provide us, the more ammunition we have to go with against UWS and say, hey, you missed this pickup, this is going to go on record and we're going to charge you liquidated damages for this.
Councilmember Wilkins?
Quickly, I've noticed that the bins are a lot lighter than the old Athens were, so they tend to fall over a lot because I take mine out of no gardener, I'm cheap. And they just really want to fall. And the Athens ones were a lot heavier. And so structurally, I think there's a, there's a problem with the quality of the, so I wouldn't blame the workers if, if what they have wants to fall over, it's going to fall over if you touch the damn thing. It happens to me, it is bumping, it goes flop. The lid opens up and it falls over. I mean, it's really poorly designed.
I mean, I understand that concern too. I'm from Anaheim myself, too. I requested one of my older carts to be replaced. I got, you know, the similar type cart as the new ones. The old one was really big, heavy, bulky, but my new cart was, you know, the lighter one. But I mean, it's, again, there's a lot of environmental regulations. I can guarantee you, I mean, it's supposed to withstand the same weight, same limit as the old cart, but it's just, again, just like everything else. I mean, everybody's trying to be environmental conservative, they're trying to save the environment, and they using these. One thing, you know, UWS committed to do is to look at these cars when they do in their pickup, if they see any broken carts, if they see any missing lids or anything like that, they will proactively put in a call to get this replaced.
Okay, go ahead, Councilmember Wong.
Thank you. So thank you, everyone, for sharing this information. The bulky item pickup, is that you, the customer has to call? So I think there's some confusion there. Maybe we can help get that word out. Go ahead, sorry.
One thing I was going to say, on Saturday, the 22nd, this community meeting, there will be a meeting with UWS and we're going to be talking about all the trash services, what's included in the contract, and how you could get those services. We'll go in details about every single service that's offered and, you know, the things that we did last year. So please, I mean, if you're free at 10:00 AM Saturday morning, we're going to be here. We're going to be presenting all the services that's offered under this contract.
Yeah, it says there's a survey, also take our survey. And then last two quick things, just to shout out in our, Melissa and my sense of traction others where the bear activity right now is intense, that residents have really asked if we can get a little more proactive or perhaps even require areas to have bear carts. And because we're only offering the big one, it's really a detriment to people actually getting, as Reggie described, you know, just getting the carts down. So just sharing that. And I did just want to say back to Victoria's point, today on my street, Olive, I watched the UWS workers actually unloading by hand and putting the trash in. So I was curious why they were doing that, and I do notice that sometimes our neighbors fill their cans too high, so that was amazing to see. Thank you.
Thank you for the feedback. And regarding the pair carts, I know last couple of weeks ago, end of May, I think we sent out some, you know, preshures or postcards with information on how to sign up. We had a meeting with the official, we'll have to talk about the pair. We're trying to educate, you know, and, you know, encourage people to sign up for these.
Councilmember Marona?
I thought I'd end on a good note. UWS driver is amazing in our area. We have the small truck because we live on a private drive up in the meadows, and because of my husband's health ailments, today he walked all the way down our hill, got our can, went all the way back up and hand-delivered both of got our can, went all the way back up, and hand-delivered both of them. So he's a very kind and wonderful driver who has been really good to us, doesn't even know I'm on the town council. So I appreciate that, and.
It's really good to hear.
And so I just thought I'd give you some good news. Thank you.
Thank you, that's good to hear.
Okay, that's it. Thank you so much for coming. Thank you for the cookies. Thank you for the update. And the community should come here to the community center this Saturday, the twenty-second, ten AM. UWS will be here and answer all of the questions in addition to explaining all of their services and related costs.
Thank you. We will be here, and I hope to see you all Saturday morning.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, we are moving right along, and we have our committee reports. Six point one, our special election.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have had one application to fill the vacated seat in forty-six-ten Isis Molden. Full council has received her statement, but if you would like to come up and deliver it, we'd be happy to hear you.
Again, I'm having one of those nights, I left my phone in my speech at home, but I would like to just speak on Councilmember Nick Arzon. He was the person who introduced me to the, to the town council. I'm actually a longtime resident and found out about the town council about three years ago, and since then, he's been welcoming to me, and it's helped me prepare for this position in so many ways. He has always called me to see if I'd be interested in sitting on a board or a meeting, and I'm very interested in all his initiatives, especially the internship program, and so I really appreciate his support and guidance, and I've learned so much from him, and I appreciate you very much, so, thank you. And he's encouraged me to run, so here I am.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so according to Article twelve, Section E three, in the event of only one application being submitted for the vacancy, there will be a vote to appoint that applicant. The applicant needs a two-thirds majority vote in order to get the seat. I move that we vote.
Second.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor of seating Isis Molden in Census Track forty-six-ten. Please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That is unanimous. Stay there one second, and I think that we have Captain Williams in the back to swear you in. He's coming forward now.
Hello. If you don't mind, just raise your hand, and then just answer this question. Do you accept the position, do you accept the position bestowed upon you on behalf of the community? And do you pledge to faithfully execute all duties and responsibilities, and to uphold the town council's bylaws and ethical standards during your term in office?
I do.
Congratulations.
So you may grab your things and take a seat between Councilmembers Cauliflower and Carmody, they were happy to have you. Welcome. We are, I'm sure that your councilman, your councilmate is very happy to have a partner. And we have many active things going on in forty-six-ten that we will brief you on immediately. So welcome. Moving on to Safe Streets, Councilmember Wong.
Thank you, Chair Nap. So again, I mentioned it earlier, but May was Bike Month, and for the first time in the history of Altadena, as I understand it, at least my twenty years living here, is we've got eight schools to participate in Bike and Roll to School Day, and it was just an amazing event. California Highway Patrol helped us out, the principals were there, and one of the principals said, Dorothy, I don't know if anyone's going to show up. And there were probably fifty or sixty kids and families who really want safe place for their families to walk and ride and move around safely. So thank you, schools, that did that amazing work, and it's really nice to see partnerships go. And as Julian explained earlier, a lot of our traffic safety can be complaints or things we throw out there, and we just talked about UWS really giving constructive feedback. So UC Berkeley SafeTrack, twenty eighteen, we got a different sort of, a lot of different things, but this time we're receiving technical assistance that will help us create community walk audits, so that we can also share our safety concerns in a very structured way that will also layer in traffic collisions and just different, you know, different things to put in the story that we then are able to share with our public works, our council members, and also our council members to get involved, so that they can also see and feel what their community is feeling. And then we also have been, Public Works has been joining us as well, listening to the meetings, and also coming together at some of our walk audits. So us getting organized is an amazing thing. So the Safe Streets Committee meets the fourth Thursday of each month. Zoom tends to be our mode that we enjoy, and so our next meeting is June twenty-seventh at seven PM via Zoom. And last but not least, the bicycle, LA County Bicycle Master Plan is in Phase Three, and we, at least my understanding is we are waiting to have another sort of feedback session with Altadena at some point, and that's important. Thank you, Chair Jones. I mean.
No, no, no. I'm channeling her for sure. In fact, she was supposed to be here tonight, so I will take that as a compliment. Okay, moving on to our Communications Committee Chair Arzon.
Thank you, Chair. As we continue our efforts to better reach and interact with the community, we have once again placed interns into our summer program with our Altadena Town Council High School Internship Program. Former community lead, now councilmember Molden, who is overseeing the program for our committee, could you please update the council?
Isis, you can talk from your microphone over there. They can talk, okay, go ahead.
Okay, so I would first like to thank you all for supporting the ATC internship program. We're entering in our third year with the summer internship program, and we've got two wonderful and motivated students that we met at our host expo in April. Just to backtrack a little bit, we just completed our spring, our fall and spring internship, where we hosted twelve students every Friday at the community center, where we've introduced them to a variety of civic opportunities. We visited the library, we went to sheriff's station, the fire station, they sat here, and it all culminated in where we hosted local residents, where we took their feedback on our communication techniques with our survey, and also with our welcome packs. And so we trained them the weeks prior, and then we had about forty residents come and give us their feedback. And it was amazing to see the students, they were, I don't like to lose the term, but they were considered the leftover students, but then by the end of the semester, you could just see them grow and flourish, and they were feeling comfortable talking to the residents and, and taking ownership of what they were doing. And in addition to that, I also was able to work with a very motivated student from your high school, and she assisted a little bit with the legislative, legislative committee commencement. And so I'm going to have Jared and Graham introduce themselves. Basically, we, this summer, are going to take the initiative of having the students provide oversight on how we're providing our communications to our residents. They'll be attending all of the committee meetings, so please let us know when you guys have your meeting so that we can attend. I know we have Safe Streets, Safe Streets coming up, and also land use, that we'd like to be there in person, so please let us know. And they will be writing their feedback after each meeting, and then letting you all know how we can improve, so.
My name is Graham Simkins. I'm an upcoming senior at Pasadena High School. I'm part of the Law and Public Service Academy there, and I guess, like, an academic interest of mine would be social studies, and civically would be probably social justice, so yeah.
Yeah, hello, I'm Jared, I'm Jared Levine. I also am a rising senior at Pasadena High School. I'm like, I used to be in the LPS Law Academy, but now I'm in App Academy, and I guess two, two interests of mine are, I like public policy and government, so that's why I'm doing this internship.
So I'd like to say one more thing. We would like to expand, expand this program to as many students that are interested, so please let me know if you are a high schooler watching this, to contact me, and I can connect you either with an organization that's looking for interns, or you can come onboard with us, because we'd like to grow the program again for the fall and spring again. And also, we had wonderful residents over the spring that sponsored all of our students' lunches. They provided lunches for all twelve students every Friday, and we'd like to send a really huge thank you for you guys. We were able to host the students and also feed the students for every Friday. And also, thank you to all the people who hosted our students, the sheriff's station that provided tours. They had great feedback, and they really enjoyed that experience. So if any other residents would like to help our students, please let me or Councilmember Arzon know, and we will take any donations we can, because we'd like to pay these students for their time.
Great, thank you, and thank you guys for coming. Okay, we are moving on to general public comment.
May I take it, Chair?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. All right, so I've gotten four public comment cards. I see our former Chair Veronica Jones has arrived. We'll see if there's a comment coming from her. I'm going to bring you up to at a time. Let's start with David and Dale. Dale, if you can wait on deck. David, you'll be on the mic first. As a reminder, you have two minutes. My fellow councilmember Chris O'Malley will hold up cards when your time's coming to an end, and go ahead when you're ready.
Great, I'm Dave Skabinski. I'm an over-thirty-year resident of Altadena. I have serious concerns about Pasadena Poly trying to come in and build a sports complex right at the edge of our community, at the top of our community, and at the edge of a national force. It's an awful idea, and I'd like to find what we can do as a group, all of you and Supervisor Barker, to prevent this entire thing from happening. So that's my first point. My second point is, I've heard that along Lake Avenue near Mariposa, the junction of Lake and Mariposa, where the old Webster's used to be, that there may be some plans brewing to put large-scale housing there, and I think we need to consider what that will do to the character of Altadena. And if anything happens, it should be limited in height to two, no more than three stories. I think that, that building they put over on, in, near the, the west side of Altadena, going to four stories is ridiculous in the midst of a community like ours. So I'd just like to ask for any support for those things, and I'd like to get involved to prevent the thing for Pasadena Poly happening.
Thank you, Dave. Dale, you're up, and can I get Danny Ray Sanders to be on deck, please?
Thank you. Hi, I'm Dale Lacassella. I'm co-president of the Friends of the Altadena Senior Center. I'm just here to tell you that things are really starting to happen over there. We have, we have a new administration, we're working really hard to get things back on track. We have Free Monday movie, first Monday of every month at noon. We're have, we have our second field trip upcoming, and that is, we had, we had a lovely successful trip to the Broad Museum earlier in the month. On the twenty-fifth, we're going to Oliveira Street. There are a few spaces left if anybody is interested, and it's free. They, I wanted to, to remind you that anybody fifty-five and older can belong to the Senior Center, there's no fee, you just have to sign up. We have a beautiful weight room that has all kinds of machines and exercises, we have all kinds of classes going on, and we're actually adding a few more. There is a free lunch program. It's not free, it's three dollars for seniors, five dollars for non-seniors such as caregivers or so forth, but if you can't afford it, they will still feed you. You just need to sign up. And I know there's a lot of people in this area where that might be the only meal they get during a day, and I, it's so important to urge people, sign up and come in and have lunch. Also, there's Meals on Wheels, which you can come to the Senior Center and get signed up for that. So I just want all of you to encourage people in your area to come see what we're up to.
Dale, before you go, I just wanted you to know that after taking some feedback from the community, I did provide a, a long list of concerns to those from the Aging and Disabilities Department, and to the Supervisor's Office, that we can work toward improving things there for all of our seniors, and especially as it relates to everyone getting the support there that they need, so that the programs that the seniors in Altadena want are provided there.
We appreciate that. We have been in discussion with them, and things are starting to change, so thank you very much.
That's so good to hear.
Good to hear.
Thank you, Dale.
And we would love to be on the community list from now on, so that we can keep you updated.
I have you on it.
Thank you.
Danny Ray, and if I can have Ethan on deck for, after Danny.
Hello, my name is Dani Sanders, and I'm an out and proud educator here in Altadena. I have served as one of the organizing leads for Altadena Pride since 2023, and I was asked by Councilmember Arzon to come today just to acknowledge the community and share some numbers from our event this month. So leading up to the ceremony opening, our Facebook page saw over five thousand visitors, and this is largely thanks to the hard work of brand spanking new councilmember Isis. Our opening ceremony at Altadena Library, we had over three hundred attendees who saw the unfurling of a brand-new pride flag, with the support of such local dignitaries, including Supervisor Barker and Senator Portantino. Over two hundred and sixty of those who attended the opening then joined a pride walkabout, where stops included Altadena Baptist Church and Grocery Outlet, where two hundred and thirty of our marchers posed for a group photo in front of the mural there. My favorite part of the event, we served four hundred and fifty free meals in Triangle Park, thanks to our community partners, and we were lucky to receive so much support and participation of sixty local businesses and organizations during our festivities. Our community partners helped to provide food, health resources, water, and important information to festival attendees at the Altadena Senior Center, Triangle Park, and all along the route of our walkabout. At the Senior Center, we welcomed over five hundred members of the community of all ages. Attendees enjoyed live performances, free refreshments, and access to other resources, including health screenings and ways to find community. We hosted unique educational opportunities, including community discussions, which saw over one hundred attendees. Last thing I'll say really quickly, thank you so much to the community, and we are still giving away free pride flags at Webster's Pharmacy, Just Ask.
Thank you, Danny Ray Sanders. Next up, we got Ethan Carver.
Hey, everybody. I'm Nick Derrick, this is my business partner here, Ethan Carver. We have a local mobile car wash. We are childhood best friends, we are in college. It's the second summer we're doing the car wash. We've done over fifty, sixty washes in the last summer, and we just started last week. And we're just trying to get more involved in the Altadena community. We've done a lot of washes in Pasadena, Arcadia, San Marino sort of area, but we are, we're just here to sort of, you know, get more involved in the community.
We brought some flyers here. If you're interested, please let us know, we'd be happy to hand them out. You may have seen them in your mailbox last summer, as we handed them out around the community, however, not, to not much success, which is kind of why we're here, to introduce ourselves in person, to kind of get the word out, you know? But as far as our pricing goes, we start at thirty-five dollars for a sedan, and obviously that includes an exterior wash, as well as a vacuuming and dusting of your interior, and then forty dollars for an SUV, including the same things, obviously, but thank you.
Before you guys leave, I just want you to know that you were within earshot of a lot of upcoming community events, so I highly encourage you to come to as many as you can, starting with Friday's ribbon cutting, ribbon cutting at Webster's, West, oh my God, is it? It is after nine, this is when I turn into a pumpkin. Webster's Community Pharmacy, which has now moved down Lake, so there'll be a lot of people there, so if you wanted to come and pass out your flyers, that might be a good next step for you.
Thank you. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for sharing. And Chair, that is it for public comment?
Great. And just so the public knows, those comment cards have been distributed to the Census Track reps that they are in, and someone will follow up with you if you left your contact information. We are moving on to our Census Track reports, starting with forty-six-ten Councilmember Japhina. Oh my goodness, I really just lost my mind right there. I need a cookie.
Good evening. We just have a few updates for forty-six-ten. There's a lot of information, but we do have a website link that will provide a lot of information. That will be up on the site within.
the site within a day or so. And that's, just to get that out at the top, it's affirmedhousing.com. Okay, there are some questions and concerns that we've had. And some of the major things that have been happening has been centered around, of course, safety and visibility. And so we've been working very hard and very diligently. We thank you for your patience. And the, one of the main things is the, the traveling down southbound on Lincoln. And when you come to Figueroa, well, first of all, you have, it goes, it narrows to one lane. And which becomes a little bit dangerous. And then when you are turning right, traveling west onto Figueroa, the visibility is not what it should be. So we've been working with them and they did check and everything was up to code as far as the engineers and so forth. So what they are doing is they do have an inspector that comes out every day to make sure that everything is complying still. And let's see, one of the other major things is the bus stops because we have people that they don't necessarily drive, but they rely on the bus stop. And the bus stop, there was no warning that it would be removed. It was removed. And so we've been working with them. And they did now post a sign. And the, the bus stop that has been there and was there at Lincoln and Figueroa will be, it was abandoned and it will be abandoned until the 30th of June. And then it will be placed back. In the meantime, up on, just a block up on Mountain View and Lincoln, that's where those that used to catch the bus there at Lincoln and Figueroa will catch it. There is also a stop at Crosby and Lincoln. Let's see, there are a few other things that I will say very quickly. Some people did have some questions. And so the, the building right now is scheduled to be open mid to late August, possibly early September. It is 80% complete. And we're just kind of waiting on, you know, the last things and then a few things from the, dealing with the water, the electricity, and the gas. And the building is 71 units. One unit is for an onsite manager who will be living there. And half of those apartments, 35 of them are open for low income. And that's available to anyone. And there are income restrictions and so forth. And all of that information is on the website. The other 35 are through the Union Rescue Mission via downtown Los Angeles. And they will be in charge of those 35 units. And they are designated for former homeless. It's, so with that, they will be monitored and under their program. And we'll have more, you know, details to come with that. But the other 35 are open, you know, to anyone. And so they do encourage you also to apply. It's 455 and up. They have studio apartments and one-bedroom apartments there. And so even if you have people in the community or family members who maybe live across town and you want them closer, a lot of times that's, it's a good opportunity. So we do encourage you to apply. Or, you know, if you know someone, encourage them to apply. I think that's about it because there's so much information. But those were the main things. And again, the website has myriad of information. And we'll make that available. I just want to take a peek here and make sure there's.
And just to chime in, we did invite Affirmed Housing to come and present to us the completion of the project and what happens now. And so we're hoping to see them at our August meeting.
And Dave, if you didn't catch, this is the building you're talking about.
Yeah, I think that's about it. Everything else, there's a lot on the, on the website. If you have any more questions, you know, feel free to reach out to me. And we're very good at getting answers very quickly. They, they're working very, very hard. And if you've seen the amount of emails and texts and, yeah. So we're working really hard for you. And we understand that safety is a concern. And it's a big concern for all of us, too. And we do understand that there are some questions, you know, regarding who's coming in and, you know, the, the term homeless. There are 29 parking spaces available. And we live, about seven of those are for staff. But any questions that you do have, please, you know, get in contact with us. Safety and your concerns are of the utmost importance. And we do understand that. That's all.
Thank you so much. 4611, Councilmember Settleman.
Well, I can make this very short since Victoria already made my. Yes. So Webster's grand reopening and ribbon cutting on Saturday at 12 o'clock.
No, I think it's at 10.
No, the trash is here at 10.
Okay.
And Webster's is at 12.
Is at 12. Okay. And then can you give the address?
12 to 2.
Give the address.
It's 2333 Lake Avenue in the Chase area.
Okay. I think that that wraps up our very late starting but quite succinct meeting. I will take a motion to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn.
And Reggie seconded. All in favor? Thank you so much. We'll be back here in July.